Are we still connected over here?
Can you all still hear us?
Hello, can you hear us still?
If you're talking to me, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you Chief. All right, so it is seven o'clock and we're going to call this regular town meeting of the Board of Commissioners to Order. We will start with a roll call, Clark Cosen.
Will do. President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Culver.
Here.
Commissioner Henshaw.
Here.
Commissioner Law.
I'll make sure she's not in the waiting room.
I'm looking, I'm checking. Commissioner Penoyer.
Present.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond. Police Chief David Burst.
Here.
Donald Hookson, the Councilor, here.
Now, right, so Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll move on to a review of the agenda, Clark Cosen. We can just go to the business part.
Exactly. Here we are. All right, on business, we have A, ordinance 2023-07 codification for vote. B, ordinance 2023-10 property standard for discussion. C, residents of 2023-18 Spring Branch Road Drive paving for vote. D, S H A three-year spot utilization agreement for vote. E, general government job description for vote. F, circuit rider for vote. G, attorney RFP for vote. H, church street parking lot RFP for vote. Under business, we have new business, we have A, resolution 2023-19 ATF MOU for net access for vote. And B, paid family leave MML alternative plan for discussion.
Are there any changes? Hearing none. We will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
One question on the consent items.
Yes.
Administrative report for the splash pad development design construction. There's one comment about, I think, sorry, I believe it was actually the Public Works Director.
Oh, it's in his, okay, sorry.
He had a little spark to play in Hunsdale contracts about the status of the playground county proposed a fee in lieu instead of water retention system they proposed. A new proposal that they had.
Um, so I have a number, but I don't know if it's a final number. Director Bond, are you? The concept, they've been asking us to install a super expensive water retention system to retain water, but everything for the splash pad is permeable, so we're kind of, you know. So they are willing to give us a fee in lieu of that system, and it is eminently affordable. Director Bond, are you here?
Yes, I'm here, and I apologize, I missed the beginning of this question. But I believe you're talking about the splash pad and the county's fee in lieu of the detention center, detention system?
Correct. Yeah, I didn't know if I was allowed to throw that number out that you gave me the other day, so I'm turning it over to you.
That's not a problem. So the fee in lieu for the county, their standard is $16,000 per impervious acre. Being that we are well under that number for the amount of impermeable surface for phase two. The number that they are projecting is somewhere around 1,600, but that is not final, so we're trying to get some, uh, some final numbers from the county on that fee in lieu. But that's what they estimated it to be based on the impervious acreage that we have.
That would be a one-time fee, a per month usage fee, or whatever.
That would be a one-time fee.
Thank you.
Anything else? Or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll first, thank you.
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Culver. Commissioner Henshaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Penoyer.
Aye.
I know she's not feeling well, and she's been enjoying virtually, but she might be feeling worse than she anticipated.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So we'll move on to reports. I will kind of go through these. The Arts Council has not been able to get another meeting together, so that's kind of where they're at. Things on hold while they pull together for a meeting. Chief Burst, do you want to give the cert report?
Uh, yes, so cert had their monthly meeting, and they also helped out with the, um, car show, the Cruisin' on Main car show, and the movie night for the month of August. That's it.
Commissioner Culver, Economic Development.
Sure. Uh, we had the initial meeting of the Economic Development Committee. Number, tentatively scheduled for a follow-on meeting next Wednesday, just waiting for some confirmation on that. At that meeting, we discussed outstanding community designation application rule, as well as outstanding due for grant funding reimbursement. I'll look on a couple of those things. I've been in conversation with Maryland National Capital Park and Planning, as well as the HCD, where it is. I've gotten some information that we didn't have previously. The mission was to submit our application for the full amount. There was one question about one of the properties, Maryland Historical Trust certification wasn't present, so they're just looking to get a couple more pictures, but I think we can provide to them so that they have all that information. When their portal is back up, we can resubmit it. That's moving more than it looks. Hopefully get that resolved.
Thank you. All right, Events Committee. Yes, Commissioner Law is still not here, so I've spoken with Lisa from the events coordinator for the town. And they're working on getting everything needed for Trunk or Treat and supporting the Green Team for the Fall Festival that's going to be that same day. So that's October 21st. There's going to be a farmer's market event that's then going to move into the Trunk or Treat in the evening. So I believe that that is their main focus right now, and I know they'll start planning for our Christmas holiday event. And we'll see a slide with a planning meeting for the farmer's market date. We will move on to the Green Team.
As the mayor stated, the Green Team is getting ready for the farmer's market. We got the save the date out last week to a list of vendors, farmers that Kathy Anderson have. So we are going to be going through those and proving a final list for vendors in the coming couple of weeks. And within that.
Thank you. Greenwell Consulting, I've been talking with them, coordinating about getting ready for session, getting our asks together. I've been making sure I'm putting, you guys noticed, send me any asks. So we're working on that. They also think they might have some movement on the Stone House, the, right on the corner here, or where the fork is. So they do want us to, I put this at the end, because it was literally right before I came to this meeting that they called. They want us to reconfirm whether we are ready to take that on or not. So that's the latest with them. Then to go into the Historic Committee, they have their next quarterly meeting is also, aye, on the 21st. At 10:00 a.m. I met with the chairman earlier this week to just kind of, you know, discuss his concerns and how things need to go, so we had a good chat. He was just trying to understand the administrative processes. So they are plugging along, and they would really like to start getting more youth involved and engaged, so. So we'll move on to Commissioner Reports. So for the month of August, I have mostly been learning how to do a variety of things that the town administrator used to do. And getting that all worked out. Staff has really been amazing at stepping up and taking on different roles, so I just want to give them a shout out for that. I've also been doing some negotiating regarding annexation. I've attended a couple of county meetings, including Economic Development, one with the Deputy Chief Administrative Officers for Housing and Human Services. I attended Cruising on Main. I attended the Community Cup for Kids, which was a, kind of cookout and backpack and haircut event for back to school. Attended a garden dedication at the community garden. It was actually dedicated in honor of the gentleman who started caring for the soil, who has since passed, and his name is Nathaniel Rich. So it's now the Nathaniel Rich Community Garden. Also met with the church and Employee Prince George's, thought the potential for locating a job center over there. As a partnership between the church and the town. And met with the planners for the trail feasibility study over here, where it would be like the Chesapeake Beach Rail Trail portion that's in the town of Upper Marlboro. Connecting 725 out to Ocrane Highway and connecting everyone to the Boys and Girls Club field, which would be great for the kids. I also attended PG CMA meeting this month. And have been working to support Commissioner Culver with anything he needs on economic development and meeting with our grant administrator to make sure that we're getting as much money coming in as we can. I will turn it over to Commissioner Culver.
This month, I attended two events with other elected officials from the state. I attended the legislative White House in Maryland. Initiative bills that were passed or they supported during the last general session. Also attended the Maryland reception during the congressional White House weekend. Past week, our governor, Representative Correa, was there as well. But in front of the social. Like I mentioned, had some calls with the HCD as well as HCD. Bring to the next Economic Development Workgroup meeting so they keep the team, keep the group will be working through all of these different pieces and establish that line of relationships. I attended Cruising on Main.
Commissioner Henshaw.
I have nothing at this time, thank you. So we had a back-to-school cookout, bookbag drive in August. The board of commissioners, along with the Events Committee, put together Family Fun Day, and we had a good time. In the future, we'd like to see more residents come out and support so that we can allocate more money to do more things. Thank you.
Commissioner Penoyer. I have nothing at this time. Right, we will move right into business then. We're going to start with ordinance 2023-07 codification. Clark Cosen.
I'll give it one more time while we discuss. Ordinance 2023-07 regular town meeting today will be approved on September 26, 2023. And ordinance for the Board of Commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro, ordinance adopting.
Hold on, sorry, one second. I think if we're flipping our pages, they can't hear John read it into the record, so go ahead, start again.
No worries.
Sorry.
An ordinance for the Board of Commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro, an ordinance adopting a codification and revision of the ordinances of the town of Upper Marlboro, Prince George's County. State of Maryland providing for the maintenance of said code repealing and saving from repeal. Certain ordinances not included therein and other provisions of general and specific subject matter found therein and making certain changes in previously adopted ordinances. This is adopting the code that will actually be produced by UNICO, which we actually all know have a future proof. And they are actually on hold right now pending the approval of the property standards, which I think they'll be voting on hopefully in the future. Attorney Best is currently working on some revisions for that. So once that's done, we get that approved, they will update all the ordinances that you all have passed since that, and then they will produce it. It will take three months afterwards to get that back. But this approves the ordinance that actually takes care of approving your code that will get put on the website once it comes back.
Any discussions? Public, if you are online and wish to comment, please raise your hand. Public, if you're in the room and you wish to comment, please come up to the podium.
If you're online.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-07?
So moved.
There are seconds, is that good?
President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Culver.
Aye.
Commissioner Henshaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Law.
Aye.
Commissioner Penoyer.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you so much.
All right, so, thank you, and we will move on to ordinance 2023-10 property standards. This is still in discussion phase because, as Clark Cosen mentioned, the town attorney is still working on it. I'm going to ask Clark Cosen to do an introduction for us.
I can read ordinance 2023-10 session regular town meeting introduced.
You don't have to read it necessarily into the record, do you?
No, I mean, I just think it's always good to give an update.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't going to make you read the whole thing.
So basically, this is updating the property standards for the town. As we all know, most of the property standards get listed into the code. So we, the town attorney has been provided with the commercial as well as other property standards that have been hopefully amended. It will come before you all for discussion, changes, things you would like to make, and then, of course, we'll have a public carry regarding the property standards, and then the final vote. That is the process right now. He has said it's a cumbersome thing, but he's working on it, and he'll just, if you get it done, we're getting a complication that's being held up.
And kind of when we went to the town attorney with this, he said you have to actually, you can't just do the piece, you have to do the commercial and the, I think it's called building.
Yeah, the building, the building.
The other pieces at the same time.
Exactly, all three need to be done at the same time.
So that's why it's.
Residential, your commercial, and your building structure as well.
Is there any kind of discussion from us to add before we start taking public comment?
Just basically says we're adopting the county's code, clarifying anything that we get.
So would that mean we don't have any say in anything?
No.
Would the town won't have any say in anything?
It's just adopting the county's code. There's a lot of things that people have kind of come to us about that are in the county code but that aren't in our code. And so, you know, then we'd have to call the county out to enforce something, and then that gets out of our hands.
I think he said something about that before, about like the fines and stuff like that, and you have to go court and all that stuff.
Well, still, that, well, we'll kind of make that process a little more friendly, but at least we'll have the county's code. So it won't be kind of this question of like, well, county allows this, county allows this, and this should be the, make sure that it's, right, it's all going to be kind of consistent with the county, and then we'll have our own process for, you know, issuing notifications before we bring in the county. So that if, you know, you have gotten sick and you didn't mow your grass, and, you know, we can say, hey, you okay? Before we start fining you, and you can say, I've been sick and I've got it next weekend, or however that is. Any more comment before we take public?
What will be the office for enforcing the code? I mean, are we still going to go on complaint-driven? That if nobody complains, everything just stays the same?
So it's not.
Or do we have a, a way to, I mean, most times, if I'm seeing it, I'm sure other people are seeing it as a violation, and other things are violations, and nothing gets done about it until somebody complains and nobody does anything. My question is, do we have to call, if we call 311 for the county, can we complain about the town?
Yes, you can always, you know, I did have to bring in the county for some of our commercial problems. That, but you can always call the county. There's an issue of some of the areas that have received complaints and have been issued an initial citation. Those citations were removed in previous administrations. So it's hard for us to go back and reissue the same citation for something that the person has their citation removed for. So it's not that it's complaint-driven entirely, it's that we've cited this before and we were told not to. So, you know, it's become, it's a cyclical problem, that's why we really need to get this in place, so it becomes, this is the new thing, this is what we're doing, and now, moving forward, we can enforce this without any difficulty.
You're saying somebody has gotten fined previously.
Maybe not fined, but.
Or tapped on the end and then removed it.
Yeah.
And then now we can't really go back and issue the same thing because we've already removed it before.
Right, so it becomes very inconsistent, it's a consistency thing.
When you said we were told not to, what was told not to by whom?
You have previously told staff not to, when you were the mayor, you told staff not to follow through with certain things.
Make your pardon?
That's, you asked, that's what I'm telling you, staff has issued.
Well, when you say certain things, you're going to be more specific than that, if you're going to say, I said that.
Chief Burst, I don't know how specific we can get. Do you understand what's happening here? I don't want to like call out individual people, but I know that there are properties, and I don't want to put you in an awkward spot either.
So basically, the, the properties that we have identified in the past have created a significant problem in us being able to fully penalize individuals who consistently have problems in their house or on their property and things of that nature. So the issue is, it's very difficult to go back and try to penalize somebody for something that was voted upon because the board agreed to not move forward with fining an individual that we had actually cited multiple times. So it was a board decision to not move forward with citing this individual, and this individual continues to have issues with his property. So moving to this type of atmosphere with the county, if there's a situation that we cannot handle personally in the town, the county can assist us. Even with annexation, there's a current property that it is so badly in need of attention, we could not do it on our own, and we have to have the county to come in and assist us. So adopting their policies will make it easier for the town to be able to conduct these inspections. We will have our own individuals doing them, like the mayor said, in regards to, we can cite at a must, I mean, a much leaner timeframe, or we can give them advanced notice and say, hey, you're going to have a couple of days before we actually enforce it. But we have had in the past where properties were identified, we cited them, but the decision was made by the board to not move forward because the board felt that the rules weren't enforceable based on how they were written. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Any more questions? All right, we will take public comment. I just want to remind people online that if you would like to comment, that you can just raise your hand and Clark Cosen will identify you.
Jarrett Clay will provide, I need the same comment, but we might need last meeting. Number one, this seems to be a revised version of 2016-03, because in the beginning it says that it is replacing and repealing ordinance 88-1, which was already replaced and repealed. So I suspect that it needs to be repealing and replacing in 2016-03 and 2017-03, which you mentioned in the address. You also still have a whole section of definitions, and if you define things in this document, but then reference the county, you have the question of, did you event, you know, did you, you know, if they use the term except for each structure, but if they define it in a different way, then what does that do to their laws? Debris litter and garbage, if you're property area, all these things you defined, what does that end up doing? I suspect that you need to remove all of that if you actually want to use, you know, adopt their code that we agree you were using their definition. And it's possible that I am one of the people that was told to stop being cited because I kept getting cited for vegetation. And my point was, it does not affect the joining property chemistry or business owners at the time. And the town administrator came out and agreed with me because I kept getting these citations that were first sent to me improperly, you know, they did not follow the standards of how you were supposed to notify someone. And there was just a picture saying, fix this, and it was like, what am I supposed to be fixing? And I cleared the vegetation that was planted there on my neighbor's property, you know, affected being able to see out of my drive, you know, me seeing to the left out of my driveway, seeing out of the right. There's also one other section I've just mentioned, Section 11, repeat violations, B, otherwise noted within this ordinance, if a property is issued three or more notices with the same violation occurring within an eighteen-month period, the property shall become subject for immediate fines. However, in Section 10, number two, repeat offender, a person shall have seven days for defiling or correction of notice issued to break violation, so it already is, you know, unless otherwise noted, so that one's completely moved. That's all I have, thank you.
I did make several of those changes already with the town attorney, but I don't want to keep providing different. But definitions have come out, he's catching these repeats and that kind of thing, so. All right, is anyone online?
I don't have anyone.
All right, so since that's just discussion, we will move on to the next item, which is Resolution 2023-18. If we can all find our spot and then stop rustling our papers, so that Clark Cosen can read it into the record.
All right, now we're ready. Resolution 2023-18 session regular town meeting, September 26, 2023. The resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro, so Board of Commissioners provide rotating service.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Director Bond to give us an overview and explain everything that's happened since the last meeting, or hasn't happened. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. As previously stated in the last meeting, as of right now. of right now, we still only have one proposal, which is from NVM Paving and Concrete. The proposed budget for the completion of Spring Branch Drive is $91,971.06, which is under budget. And with adding in a 10% contingency, which is under budget, roughly $178,000. In looking at the proposal, they have pretty much fulfilled all of the asks as far as milling, road thickness, 1.5-inch milling overlay, 992 gallons of emulsified asphalt on repairs that have already been done to Spring Branch Drive by WSSC. This has been sent out to quite a few paving companies, and this is still the only one that we have received. If anyone has any-
What's the deadline?
It was passed and we extended it to Monday.
I know you extended it. What's the new deadline? It's next week?
No, it was Monday.
Oh, it was Monday. All right.
And you reached out to the company that Commissioner Penoyer asked you to reach out to?
Yes. CB3 Consulting pretty much said that they were just that, a civil engineering and consulting firm. They could help us, you know, with plans and things of that nature. However, they don't actually complete the construction aspect of the proposal. They were saying that with the Elm Street, pretty much the way that that was completed through them is the, I believe it was the contact that the previous owner, who has since passed, was able to sort of coordinate. But since they, but since the time of his passing, they don't necessarily have those type of contacts. They are willing to consult and oversee and get in more proposals and, you know, oversee the paving. However, they wouldn't be able to provide a proposal for the actual construction in the paving of Spring Branch Drive.
So Director Bond, I was looking into the database at work and I was looking, and I did see some, a listing that I can create for you, just so that you can have them in the future if you're trying to move ahead with this vendor.
Thanks.
That'd be good. But just to, I'm sorry, go ahead, man.
Do pavement and concrete, paving and concrete is the list that I have.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
I think that would be really helpful.
Yes. But as the proposal stands, we are looking at roughly close to 14 individual companies that this has been sent out to. And still, we have only received feedback from two and actual proposal from one.
My understanding, Director Bond, is that if we don't, well, that the seal coat potentially isn't going to be able to be put on at all because once it hits October, but that, so that may have to wait till spring, but that we need to really kind of get the paving done before it gets too cold as well. Is that accurate?
That is correct. Yes.
Am I right about the seal coat, or?
Depending on-
Is there potential that-
If we have a rather mild fall and winter such as last year, that sort of deadline may be able to extend a little bit, but it would take pretty much a continuous timeframe for the emulsified asphalt to sort of stick and cure. So it would have to be worn for consecutive days before they were able to plan to move forward with that.
So this resolution that the attorney drafted for us is, it allows us to sort of, correct me if I'm getting this wrong, Clark Coatsen, it allows us to kind of say, we're going to suspend the rules for how we normally do this because it's not working out for us, and we're going to do it this way instead and choose this company. So obviously, discussion, my feeling is, you know, we should get this road paved while we can. It's not like the bid that came in is extremely high. It is extremely low for what we were anticipating. And I think we should, we've put in, you know, kind of the effort to try to get more bids and that it makes sense to move forward with this. But let's hear everyone else's.
I'm fine with the process. One question I did have though was, so this funding is coming out of grant funding that we received?
It's a bond bill.
A bond fund, so able to reallocate the remaining funding to something else? Does it just kind of, what happens to that?
Well, this is good news because the vote we're getting for School Lane and Wilson Lane is more than the money we have. So what this does is it just reserves more of that bond bill money to go towards that project. So it's very good that this is coming in under the budget we anticipated. And it is also, so there's a lot of stormwater management over on School Lane and Wilson Lane, but it's kind of hopeful that maybe the estimate there will be a little high too. Fingers crossed.
That's what I was looking here.
Yeah. We'll just, we'll be able to draw down the funds from the state. Have you comments online or in the audience? Share them because we are, we are doing a slightly different process, but we have tried to do our due diligence to get free quotes and have not been able to do that.
Right.
All right. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2023-18? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I-
Mr. Colbert.
Aye.
Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Law.
Aye.
Commissioner Penoyer.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to our three-year salt utilization agreement. Does anything need to be read into the record for this, Clark Coatsen?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll turn it over to Director Bond to explain the agreement and what everything is, and you guys can ask him your questions.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick breakdown. Due to the town not having a salt dome and an environmentally friendly way to store salt on-site at Public Works, we obtain our salt from the State Highway Administration just for their sort of, I guess, accounting purposes for record-keeping and tracking of the amounts of salt that go out. This agreement pretty much sets in place boundaries, pretty much limits on how much salt we're able to get. If I'm not mistaken, I'm sorry, I don't have it necessarily the whole thing in front of me. We put our limit for $2,000. Anything over that, we would have to sort of come back to the, come back to the table. There is a, well, each driver has a, has a sheet so that every, each truck reports to the salt dome. It tells how many tons that each truck got, and that's how that is tracked. This is a three-year agreement, which is pretty standard for this sort of thing. It is the nearest salt dome in the area. The next salt dome is the county's salt dome, which is located off of the RC Road, which is roughly 15 to 20 minutes outside of town, whereas this one is roughly six minutes inside of town. I will take any other questions that you guys may have this time.
I think you answered my question last time about us not having that storage facility for salt. So I think it makes a lot of sense.
Commissioner Henshaw, you were asking about the price, but are you good?
I'm ready for you to answer if you can do.
Okay. Great. Is there any public online? No one standing up here?
There are no online.
Oh.
I'll ask a question. Jarrah Clay will provide. There was mention in the agreement that we can't return any of the salt to them. So do we have at least storage for like, you know, a truckload of salt or whatever we have that might not get used in our storm?
They have a three-year contract, so they have to hold it.
Director Bond, what do we do if we have more salt than we need at the end of the storm?
At the end of the storm, hopefully, we don't have a whole truckload of salt. There's been instances where there's maybe been a half, a half a truckload or a half a hopper full. And we store that in the 55-gallon drums. We have roughly three of them on-site, and we use the Kubota tractor whenever we need to refill the truck for the next storm before we actually go back to State Highway. So we utilize that first before we go back and get more salt.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to approve the three-year salt agreement?
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second. Frank Blom.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Law.
Aye.
Commissioner Penoyer.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
We'll move on to the remaining general government job description. Been discussing these since the beginning of August. And at the last meeting, more time to review them was requested. Is there anything anyone has on this?
I didn't see anything particularly that stood out to me. Okay, I have the bookkeeper. You've got, this includes providing copy, fact, and notarizing services to the public, but in the qualifications, they don't have to be a notary. Would that not be a part of the qualification?
We'd probably add that in the same way that it's on this one, which is a, sorry.
Who is the administrative assistant? What role is that?
That's what I'm talking here.
Sorry. With the administrative assistant, there's something in here that says that you would need-
They, they-
Become a Maryland State Notary within 90 days of start date.
Right.
We could certainly-
But it doesn't say that here.
We can certainly add it to that, to this. And we'll have to give our current bookkeeper a 90 days from the change because it wasn't a requirement.
What, administrative assistant?
We're talking about the bookkeeper. The bookkeeper, I guess. Or we can remove that, though. It's kind of nice to have more people doing it. I guess that's, I guess is the question for us.
Or isn't that something that the residents can come get from us and free, or come to the office and get for free?
I think it's, yeah. Mrs. Lucy does the notarization, but we could make it so that-
We're just making it so that-
We pay for them to go.
Right, right.
Yeah, the certification, though, but yeah.
Well, if you're making it part of your job description, she should be able to do it.
Right, right, right. That's what I'm saying. I think part of the question is, we're just want to make sure. It's just making it clear.
Yeah. I mean, it's not something that we really have a ton of. Usually, people are able to make appointments, but I don't have a problem with adding that to the experience and then getting our current person up to that. Is there any other changes except for that one?
The administrative assistant collected profits incoming payments for services rendered at Town Hall and compliance with established policies and procedure. Would that not be the bookkeeper?
No, because of the like separation, we're a small operation, so for audit purposes, the collections are done generally. The bookkeeper does do some collections, but generally the collection is done by the administrative assistant, then put in a box, then counted by the bookkeeper. It could be that all one person does it, but we like to have more internal control set up for our auditing.
Check the balances, yes, I can see that. But not too many hands, right?
Because it's only a few hands. And then, so then the, and Tom's been kind of getting involved in his role of treasurer, where then the bookkeeper, she's just kind of to explain how the process works. She takes all the receipts out, she gets them ready for depositing in the bank, counts them, and someone else is there with her and counts them and checks them, goes through them. But multiple eyes are on things to fake and avoid one person being alone with things. So when the drawer is counted, there's two people there, kind of thing.
Are these people all bonded? I'm sorry. Are they all bonded? If they're handling money at any level, they should be bonded.
Right. So that is, Darnell, do you know the answer to this? Because this is totally a Kyle question that I could look up, but I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
No, apologies.
I'm not sure if it's something you know. You don't either. That's fine.
I was when Kyle said that we had to bond.
Right. So, yeah, I'm going to assume that that's done, but I will check and look it up. It's just not something that I keep in my head to answer that question for you. Right. If it's not, we'll fix it. But if it most likely is, it's just, I can do a lot of things that Kyle did, but I can't download his brain and- So we, do we have any other comments, changes? Can allow public comment?
Jarrah Clay will provide. In the distinguishing characteristics of the town clerk, it says this is a single class appointed by the mayor and town commissioners for the county charter. The town charter, the exception needed to five, having, the court shall be included by the residents with the approval of the law. So I don't know if you want to make some things up so that way they actually just match what the charter says. And also the three years of increasingly responsible professional and technical experience to include substantial experience for other public agencies who actually has disqualified a president of the past town clerk. Hasn't worked for other agencies, can't think of it.
Yeah. We have, we don't have any other hands? Is there a motion to approve the job description with the change to the bookkeeper of them becoming a Maryland State Notary within 90 days of the start date?
Still move.
Okay. Is there a second? Clark Coatsen?
Commissioner Blom.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Law.
Aye.
Commissioner Penoyer.
Aye.
We'll move on to the circuit rider agreement. This is a contract for the grant rider portion of the circuit rider. This person has been submitting grant applications and most of, most of the applications they've been submitting have not, have reached their, like, hey, you've got this state yet. But they've been evaluating, I want to say there's like fifteen different grant applications at federal, state, and local levels, they've been evaluating for whether we can apply for them. They have been submitting the application and responding to follow-ups and getting all that information together. This just makes the contract for the rest of the year, I believe. Oh, it's supposed to say August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. I'm not sure what happened, because it's like weird, too, it's looked it up. So it should say August twenty-twenty-four, so I apologize for that. Are there any questions?
She's on a part-time basis, is that the one that's going to be, we're going to be sharing her with another town or something like that?
Right.
So, sort of. The thing, they, the, the town, we need grant management. The other towns need like a office manager type job. And they're two different things, and that's why we could never find someone to do the one job. So we've put it all together.
So you can get a bigger salary and get somebody to do both jobs.
Right, so she, she's writing grants for the town, but she will assist the other two towns. But she's not necessarily writing a grant, she's assisting, because they're getting more time from this other person. So she's helping, you know, provide that assistance there. Not necessarily be writing all of the grants.
Who's picking up her benefits?
We are picking up, well, she doesn't have benefits. Because she's contracting. We're picking up the benefits from the other person, that's why we get some of their time.
She works for other towns?
She works, yeah, she is contracted out entirely, she doesn't get benefits from us.
Two, two, let's say two towns that she works for is going for the same grant. How does she figure that out?
She's not doing grants for them.
Right, she's not doing grants for other towns, as far as I know, but, I mean, she writes, if she wasn't writing successful grants, then she wouldn't continue to be employed. And I believe, Chief, are we her first? You, you've been working with her more closely, are we her first town, or do you know?
I couldn't hear the question, what was the question again?
The question was about Adrian and whether she's working for other towns and if that creates a conflict when she's applying for grants. I know she's been doing a lot of grants for you, so that's why I'm asking you.
No, there's no, no, there's no conflict because she's on a hourly basis with us. So she has, I believe it's fifteen hours or up to fifteen hours with us, and then she has whatever other time with the other municipalities. And I can say that she has written grants and we have been awarded one. We're waiting an answer on another one. And I just received some information about a grant today that I'm going to send to her tomorrow. So I believe she's applied for at least seven grants for the police department. But due to our, thankfully, low crime, we don't qualify for most of these grants because they want to see higher crime numbers or they want to see a task force, which we're not a part of at this present moment, so we can't apply for, I mean, we can apply for them, but we're not being awarded those grants.
So how much experience does she have? Does she, does she, has she written grants in the past?
Yes, so she wrote several very successful federal grants for the city of Hidesville and their near neighbors to do some really innovative programs. They were able to get grant funding that funded some of their public safety programs. She was working in their public safety department. And so that's kind of how I heard about her when we were looking for grant riders and no one was applying. So I said, do you want to apply? And she's been, you know.
I can also say that for, I can say for the city of Hidesville, last year, I believe it was last year or the year before that, no, I think it was last year. She got three hundred thousand dollars for the city of Hidesville in their mental health program that they started.
I think if she was, you know, displaying a conflict of interest between various towns that she was working for, she would quickly run out of people willing to hire her. So I don't think that is a concern, and it's a one-year contract, so, you know. You have a thirty day out.
And if I'm not mistaken, if I'm not mistaken, isn't the circuit rider grant, I mean, the contract for the circuit rider is for them to work with multiple municipalities. So it can't be a conflict, I believe, because it's a state program that they're allowing them to work for multiple municipalities to assist everybody with whatever they need.
My question would be, wouldn't pay be based on performance? I mean, she's making X amount of dollars, but that doesn't bring in anything.
So I, based on some of the other things we've gotten in, we don't want to go there because it becomes a percentage of the grant.
Yes.
And it is.
And I know you can't take money from the grant itself to pay for one, but
Right.
it was just a thought.
So, right. Other people were like percentages of grants and it was just completely on a So, yes, she is spending her hours writing grants and she is actually, in the absence of the town administrator, offered that if we need her to put any hours to any kind of stuff that he would be doing, she'll assist us as well. So. All right, is there a vote, oh, sorry, we've got to let public share, are there any hands rates online? Is there a motion to approve the grant management agreement with Adrian Agatha?
President Franklin.
Sorry, is it? Sorry, go ahead.
President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Corbett.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett.
Aye.
Commissioner La.
Aye.
Commissioner Penoyer.
Aye.
Motion, Terry. Thank you.
Right, on to the next item, which is attorney RFP. The two years are up from the last one, so this is essentially the same as the last one. Does anyone have any questions or changes as this goes out? Any public comment? Right. Is there a motion to approve the attorney RFP for us to put that out for bid?
Second.
President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Corbett.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett.
Aye.
Commissioner La.
Aye.
Commissioner Penoyer.
Aye.
Motion, Terry. Thank you.
We'll move on to the revised church street parking lot improvement RFP for us to put back out. Director Bund, you called me earlier with a question about this that I didn't fully process at the time. So can you, can you kind of explain it and if there was a change in that discussion we had earlier? If you could recommend it while you explain what we did here?
Yes, Mayor. So the revision to this RFP is basically to allow companies that aren't able to fulfill every part of the proposal pretty much to bid on individual items that they are able to complete. And hopefully, we're able to sort of piece this together under budget. Pretty much what I'm sort of getting from other directors when I put this out as to, you know, why we're not really, what could be the reason that we're not really receiving bids? Because as of right now, we still only have the one bid from, excuse me, one bill, is that this one does not have a design element. Spring Branch Drive has plans, which helps eliminate a lot of questions and guesswork. And also the way that this, that this RFP is structured, it conveys that we don't necessarily have the budget to complete in its entirety. So I guess pretty much my question would be, before this RFP goes out, could we also add a section where firms can bid to create a design element so that, you know, it would assist in us getting more bids for this particular proposal?
I'm also, sorry, I just want to make sure I understand. So almost like it might make sense for us to just bid the project out, saying this is what we want to do and we're looking for a firm to create a design or a plan for it, rather than actually send it out the way it is?
Yes, that is correct.
Would that be something CB3 Consulting would do?
Yes.
I guess, I, I want to try and see if we can make the changes on the fly and approve it so we can put it out, but if we can't, we can't. So I'm going to propose something, let me know if I'm getting it accurate. So scope of work would say, lower the improvements the town is looking to make to the parking lot. This, this RFP is for a design and planning of each of these elements. That, like just replaces all that other stuff with saying this is for design and planning of the elements. Or no?
I think that would work. I believe before the RFP actually went out of the door, we could polish that up a little bit. But for the sake of getting it approved, I believe something of that nature would work. Or maybe we could say the improvements are made up of four-phase elements with design being one of the phases.
Four.
On a consulting basis.
So these improvements are made up of four-phase elements?
Yes, and with design and planning being one of the phases. And then we can just, and then we can, as it is, electrical and lighting, stormwater and paving. But design would also be one of the phases.
Include design and consulting?
So design and, and planning, and then underneath, I'm just trying to, trying to see if we can get this to a place where we can approve it today because otherwise we have to wait till the end of October to approve it. So it would be that we're adding this thing on the top, it says design and planning, and it's underlined. And underneath it, it says, design and planning with, with estimated budget for the following three years.
Everything is correct, they just need to put in that insert about design.
Right. Design and planning for the other three elements of this, yes.
Wouldn't you need the design and planning to be
That's
done first before you even try to bid out the balance of it because you don't know that scope yet?
Right.
It's true, but if somebody is creating it, they can create the design based on the things that are here to fill in the scope, because you have the scope that you have, you have the scope already. So the design is going to consist of the scope.
And I, I sort of shared as well, Commissioner Penoyer, but that, I think that would require us to complete a whole different RFP just for the design element, which would hold this up. So if we could make that one of the scope elements, that, that will definitely help. But I, I did have
Director Bund, we want to let them bid on a single element or more elements and, and is the better way to phrase this, instead of adding a fourth underlined topic, you would say, the way stormwater management says design and installation, instead it would say, design of stormwater management, installation of stormwater management. And like, so under electrical and lighting, it would say, design of electrical and lighting. No, that's confusing, never mind.
But if, because you, you already said design.
Right, if we do it at the top.
At the top, they know that, that's the, everything coming underneath.
Right.
For the same basket.
Okay. And then it's possible we only get bids back on the design? Or, you know.
Well, they may say, yeah, I can do the design, but if they know that they have these things, they can add them to it.
Yeah, and because too, a lot of this, we know where we want the lights to go, we know where we want the charging stations to go. So that
So what are they really designing then if we know all that information?
Right, so with electrical and lighting, we don't necessarily need design. We know
May need a consultant. Versus a designer.
So, so design, planning, and consulting?
Because if you already know where you want to put this and, you know, put that, what are they designing? They, they are supposed to come
It's just the stormwater management that needs to be designed.
Really? We could just specify that.
Yeah. Design, plan, I'm going to just put the bullet, this is design, planning, and consulting for the other three elements.
There may be a design element to be, what is that? I know there were talks of doing the, I just saw this today, the, I'm sorry, the, I'm, I'm really drawing a blank on this, the,
You're thinking of anything?
No, 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 the, the solar canopy, that's what I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Solar canopies, yeah. So you're right, so if we say the other three elements of parking lot, then we'll see what comes in.
The stormwater already has design on it.
Yes. And that, we did, we ran a resident contest for the design of the lot itself, and only one person submitted, and we still have that. And it's actually what, I want to say Kyle sent that to someone at some point and they said that that worked.
If I remember that correctly, the person who submitted sort of does some sort of design work, if I remember correctly, so.
Oh, you're right. So many years ago. I think, I don't think I was a commissioner, I think I was on the, a different, like a committee. It was that long ago. It wasn't
Was it Larissa?
I can't I don't remember, but it was in Landings and all that stuff, and Kyle has it. It was, it was that long ago.
Oh, but it was in Landings. We have all the baggage of Landings, we could pull it up that way. It was before town, then Landings is going to be a little harder.
That way, it was before, then landings is going to be a little harder to do.
So I guess the question, let let me see if I can phrase this in a way that we can pass it tonight. Is everyone kind of comfortable? Okay. So is there a motion to approve the Church Street Parking Lot RFP? We're gonna have to hold the motion for public comment, but with the addition of a design and planning element including consulting services, which will have a bullet point saying design, planning for and consulting for the other three elements of this parking lot. We'll take the motion in the second and then hold for public comment.
Well.
Is there a second? Okay, so we're gonna hold the vote because I didn't take public comment and we can do that. That's that's the way we're going to do it. All right.
So we're playing a longer fight. Um, you have in this the budget, the town's budget for each section of this project is hundred thousand dollars. So by adding another section, are you now increasing the budget by a hundred thousand? Uh, and two, it says that RFPs are to be submitted by three weeks ago. You probably need to change that part two.
Is there anyone online?
No, I did not have anyone online.
No, actually. I don't know if it works for this sort of thing. Um, when I look at the chart, uh, we just had a concept of notice of intent where it wasn't, wasn't quite an RFP, but it was like we're working on something. If you're interested in proposing to it, let us know now so that way we could then, you know, let you know as soon as it was ready. And I don't know if something like that would slow you down more or make it with the person that you'd like to negotiate or what is that they can do?
Um, we can amend, we can amend the motion and which I will do in a minute, but we can also discuss while the motion is on the floor. Um, I'm not trying to rush this. I just think if there's only this one change we're making, then it doesn't make sense to wait another thirty days. What is everyone else? Okay. Um, all right, so motion on the floor. I am requesting to modify the motion to change the bid submittal date to November. John, I'm looking at, you know, what do you think? It would be November.
Fifteen day, right?
It'd be, I usually give them thirty days.
Thirty days, okay.
But I don't want to do it right before you guys are getting the applications in while you're doing the election. So if we make them do on November seventh, then that'll give you guys all time to look at them afterwards. We okay with that? All right, so do we have to get a second, like a motion on the revision?
No, because you're adding it to the.
To that one, okay. And now, so now we'll do the vote.
Having it written the way that it is, we're adding a fourth element. I had those similar thoughts.
Adding, yes, I would go ahead and change. Amend the motion to include the date and the budget.
You're gonna propose the amendment because I'm not sure what you want to change it to.
If the original intent was a hundred thousand for each of these elements, we're total of three hundred thousand dollars for the total. The whole scope of work.
So I think the problem with that is the scope of work is just more than three hundred thousand dollars. That's why we have to phase it.
Yes, that's why we broke it down because.
No, yeah, if you're money. If you save three hundred thousand dollars for the whole thing, if someone can only, is only wants to bid on the paving, for example. Yeah, you 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 almost have to give them, I think that's what was said in from the person, uh, Warren Bill said the same thing when they proposed their bid. They can't. Uh, they will only want, if you only want to do one part of it, you have to know what part, you know, if you're gonna give them a hundred thousand on each phase.
What do we have? I guess where I get caught up is again, if we're adding a fourth design element, the way that the budget reads is that we have four hundred thousand dollars for the total. Have four hundred thousand dollars for the total path. Are we willing to give a hundred thousand just for the design phase?
Right, I don't think we are. And Director Bond, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you said that the electric and lighting phase shouldn't cost a hundred thousand dollars either. That accurate?
I don't believe so. It it it's gonna be, it it it's gonna be close, but it it shouldn't be um a hundred thousand. Um, paving, I believe, should come in under budget. Stormwater management is probably gonna come in over budget. Um, I would think just because of the environmental impacts of being uh right next to the Western Branch, I believe, uh, we're gonna, we may need to anticipate some issues with uh deep high. But I believe electric and lighting will come in slightly under that and paving should come in under budget.
I think that the bottom line is we really don't know what we don't know, right? Um, and no, we don't have the four hundred thousand dollars to to the project. Um, so we're going to have to phase things and we're going, that's why it says phased elements. Um, and we're going to have to kind of address each item um as it comes in. Alternatively, we can kind of table this whole thing and keep discussing it, which works. I'm not trying to, no one's gonna be able to do this in November anyway. Um, so that's, it, I think we should table it, but think how to, how do we?
You're going to.
We're gonna vote.
You're gonna retract the motion. You have to retract the motion.
Karen has to, Commissioner Lot has to rescind the motion.
I don't do that.
Just say I rescind.
I rescinding the motion.
Um, so
Now you do a motion to table.
Now we can have a motion to table. Or we can change this.
I move we table it until after the election uh in November. And we have a clearer idea of what it is we're working with. Right now, everybody's a little confused as to, we need to create a design for somebody to even start to bid on. We don't have a design. We need a design to start with. And I think by doing, if you're giving an overview, which is very nice, but like I said, if, okay, I'm going to bid on the paving. What does that paving entail? You don't, you don't give them that information. And until they have that information, they can't.
Is it, would it be possible, excuse the pot of money that we have allocated, is it possible to issue an RFP just for design?
So.
Get a design.
Yes.
Prove a design and then issue a RFP for these elements based on that design?
Okay, so question.
Yes.
This money, does it expire?
It's, it's bond money from the state. Um, I can speak with Greenwell. Um, but I think as long as we're moving forward.
They're not gonna.
Then, um, yeah, they're not gonna take it away, but I think, I think we should just table it to the next work session. I don't think we need to wait. Um, I think what we want to do is, I think what we all want to do is talk about it more, right? Um, which is generally what we save the work sessions for, so.
Okay, I move we, I, I've already made the motion, right?
You can rescind. Oh, no, you made a motion, but no one seconded it.
No one seconded.
So is there?
Well, I seconded it, table it.
Both, okay.
Well, I rescinded my motion first of all, and then she made a motion to table it.
Until November.
Until November.
Okay. And you guys.
You seconded.
Okay, um, Sir Coates, would you call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
Nay.
Commissioner Quillworth.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Ponor.
Aye.
Okay, so we won't talk about it again until November. Um, we'll move on to the new business, Resolution twenty twenty-three nineteen ATF MOU for NESS access. Um, I just said a bunch of acronyms. Uh, I'm gonna ask Sir Coates to read that into the record while we don't shuffle any papers and then I'm gonna ask Chief first to explain this.
Very well. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash nineteen session regular town meeting dated September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. A resolution of the town board commissioners of the town of Marlboro to approve a memorandum of understanding MOU regarding the NIVIN, National Integrated Ballistic Information Network, and work with support system, NESS.
Chief first.
Okay, so basically this MOU is the alcohol, alcohol, tobacco and firearms is changing their process in the capital region, which means DC, Maryland, Virginia, and as well as Baltimore City. And it's because of the uh violent crime that has been going on across the uh capital region and in this area. So what they're doing is they're proposing that each municipality in the state of Maryland and in DC and Virginia to have their own MOU with them so that in any event, if we recover a firearm or if we have a firearm related crime, the information will come directly back to us. What happens?
Yeah, Chief first, we're, Chief first, we're losing you.
And.
He doesn't.
Cities or municipalities, whereas if we have, then we can get the information. How about now?
Chief first.
Hello, hello.
Yeah, you're with us now. I I wrote, I.
How about now?
I I'm just gonna, we can hear you now. Um, I'm gonna read that the bullet point that you gave me the other day. Um, but which was that it's real-time information on the guns that we recover and we can get it faster. Um, so we don't have to wait for it to go through Prince George's County first. It comes directly to us.
Says like a computer.
Uh, and we would have our own access account. I think it's just an online account, right, Chief?
Yes, we have our own account and the results come directly to us as an agency as opposed to going through Prince George's County. Because if we're have, we have an active investigation and if it sits on somebody's desk with Prince George's County for a week or more, that information, we're losing time on that. And that's been the problem with a lot of these crimes that individuals are doing multiple crimes. And the investigators are not able to get the information back fast enough to be able to link the crimes together. So this way it will come directly to the agency that's um, it's been assigned to.
So if we recover a gun and then we send it out for whatever it is. No, we will send it out.
Have our own account. It won't have to go through the county and then back to us.
So we send it out, they give us a report, but right now they give the report to the county. Then we have to get the report from the county.
It's probably a waste like a week or two.
No, I understand now.
This lets us get the report directly. Um, okay, everyone's nodding, so I'm guessing there's no questions? Okay, um, anyone online?
No, no one.
No one's standing up in the room? All right, is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash nineteen ATF MOU for NESS access?
Don't move.
President Franklin.
Uh, aye.
Commissioner Quillworth.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Uh.
Commissioner Ponor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, next item is paid family leave MML alternative plan. So I have provided you with information that MML provided to us and all the information that MML has provided to us about this. Basically, paid family leave is coming to the state of Maryland. Um, and any employer with over fifteen employees will need to provide paid family leave. MML is, they're putting together, and we have, we also have a missionaries have a presentation that was done at MML that I'm not sure we're allowed to like distribute widely, so that's why we're the only ones that have it. It kind of explains the potential costs, but how the information right now is really unclear. We don't know what it's gonna cost. We don't know what the premiums are. We don't know, you know, any of that.
Is that for us too? Are we included in that or just?
Just for the. Okay, um, and so. So it's, it's kind of like we get into the plan, so then they're helping, you know, they're paying the cost out of the plan or they're managing the plan. Here's the thing, I sent all this information to our, our lawyer, our HR firm and our accounting firm. They all said, this is not enough information to make a decision. We don't know if we're about to pay more than we need to pay or not. But this is a decision we should all make together. So I am sharing the information with you. I am sharing the opinion of our paid professionals in saying, you know, do we want to take their advice and wait and see what happens?
Absolutely.
Or do we want to get into this um, MML plan? Um, and I have talked to, I have talked to other towns about this and they have said that they don't know and that they have heard that the really big towns don't understand what it is either. Like your Dakersburg and Bowie who have big HR departments don't understand whether this is a good idea or not.
Well, then you're just finding out something about it has, you have to be a member and there's a fee for that.
Right, it's three, we'd have to pay three thousand dollars next month.
To find out what we.
To find, right, what like to find out what we don't know.
I'm I'm voting no here.
I mean, if you can't tell, my vote is no, but I think we should discuss it, so.
I mean, if if we don't have all of the information.
Door away.
I I don't see how we can go forward. Right, I don't think so.
It's just somebody that's insured managed by the state.
It's good, so there is gonna be like a state, you could do a state plan, you could administer it individually or you can join a collective like MML is trying to set up, but MML is trying to set up a collaborative without all the information. And so the municipalities are probably not gonna sign on to this. So MML, if they want to set up a collaboration, is gonna have to come back with a better.
It's gonna have more information.
So that all said, it all needs to be decided by like tomorrow or Thursday or something crazy.
Who decided?
Don't we have the option to sign up for this when they come onto appointment anyway? I mean.
No.
Like our HR firm does them offer that?
No, this is where state requires paid family leave.
Just like how DC does it, they they give family, uh, they pay for family medical leave as long as you work in the state of DC. So you get six weeks or whatever they, whatever job and they give you for pregnancy and sickness and stuff like that. So they are trying to adopt the same program, it seems that they are, but they don't have all the pertinent information that we would need to make a good decision.
Yeah, I think officially we're going to the the towns.
Right, right, right now.
I do not feel comfortable. Just fee for something. Actually, it looks like maybe, maybe we end up paying more than that fee later on, but until we know what what that actually all entails.
And.
I think we as a municipal, sorry, catch up.
No.
As a municipal, probably should, uh, you know, send them out to give more information in terms of just saying, hey, here's this idea. We'll flesh it out later after we get to.
Well, it does feel like that because they want us to reply to them before the end of the week.
How long is this, this three thousand dollars, how long is it good for? Is it a one-year thingy? And what if the person doesn't even use it? So how does that, is this? It's such a lot of questions.
I guess that that question becomes, would you guys like me to dra, write a letter out to MML saying like, you know, we have decided not to participate at this time because we do not have any idea how much this program is going to cost, um, how it compares to our other costs? And what was the thing you just said? You just said something.
Oh, yeah, just one time. And what if the person doesn't use these benefits? Uh, what happens to the money?
Are we paying for other people's people? If we don't use them, is what my, you know, the question is. We have, there's an MML convention at the end of the month.
Yeah.
I'm sure this will come up.
We don't need, but I think um some, one of you made this good point of we should tell MML how we feel about being given this fat deadline and not enough information so that they know. So I just want to make sure I'm writing down all of your comments and I will send that letter out to them. So, um, we're gonna move on to administrative updates, um, unless the public has any comment on this. All right, um, so we'll move on to administrative updates. Um, I mentioned that the Stone House, um, I got a call from Greenwell, I would say like an hour before, or six o'clock. So, um, what they basically said is that it's possible we could get the Stone House, possible we could get the Stone House expedited over to us. Um, and so the question is, are we ready to tweak it? Um, and what is, like, I think it's, uh, like, you know, when they turn it over to us, it's like a dollar type thing. But also, you know, what, I'm asking you guys to tell me what your opinions are and what your threshold for this are. So that we can make that decision as to whether to tell them yes, all your thoughts. Right, so the plan that, um, in, in Darnell, you can kinda join in. But what Kyle always kind of talked about was having it be a visitor center, but also like a bike station, like so there would be bike wrecks and water bottle filling stations because there are a lot of bikers that go through in this area and there's not a lot of parking. Um, one of the ideas that I also have floated as like, if you have a visitor center, how are you staffing that? If we allow like one or two entrepreneurs a month to rent space to sell their goods at that location, and then they would also be physically there for the visitor center. Um, and they would get a, like a lower fee because they're also, you know, providing that information. Those are the ideas that have been kind of floated out there about this, but.
Can you create a couple parking spots right there? A lot in my head.
It's, it's like a bike trail.
Yeah.
It's just right.
It's like two cars though, eh?
Yeah, you can park a car or two in the front of it.
In Church Street on the side.
You can't park on Church Street.
Park on Church.
No.
No, you're not allowed.
But the town, the town lot is in reasonable distance.
Right.
You know, so it's, it's not that bad, uh, ideal.
What about that little flat street behind it?
You can't park on press, or Trinity, Trinity.
All of that is too narrow for any.
There's no parking allowed.
Uh, we also had conversations with, I never get this name right, uh, the trails.
MNCTPC?
No, not MN, no. So. Where we're the, we're the middle that they, they don't have, we're, we're the group that.
Oh, Anacostia.
Anacostia Trail.
Yeah.
Uh, but we, uh, when, this goes back quite a ways because it was with the previous, their previous administration, uh, that they would, that would give them an opportunity to have an office in this area.
Thinking about that.
Anacostia.
Anacostia Trail.
I mean, that would fit in with the visitor center aspect, so I don't think it would.
And that was one of the things that, because we did, honey, give them five thousand dollars.
What about Lake Towne Street too?
That would be part of the visitor center element, if we could put some of the stuff that Clerk Austin has really nicely put in Town Hall where no one gets to see it.
Right, nobody sees it. That's another thing that we could use it for, with the artifacts that we have accumulated and the pictures and, and what have you, uh, for the historic committee could go in there.
So I think the same, you know, the, all these, these are all those good ideas of what we can do with it.
There's plenty of original uses.
Right, exactly. And then the, the only concern and comes from like, we're gonna have to bring in someone to evaluate if structural sound is, how much money needs to go into it. And we can apply for grants for all of that, um.
It looks like it was.
Unfortunately.
I looked in the windows.
I mean, it's a lot of not something like that.
See, we need that work, but.
By the door. Uh, unfortunately, we did get money for that building. Do exactly what we asked.
Mm-hmm.
But then they took the building. And we had to relocate that money, but we were given a state, uh, given state money for that.
Building the county?
The county.
So there's selling that was now?
The county.
They're giving it.
We've been, we've been working on it. On a lot of things, been working on it, so, so they're, they're willing to get that done. Um, I just wanna make sure we're all on board with taking on this additional piece of property that is going to require, you know, maintenance and, and, you know, all of that. I don't actually, I like, I think it can be a positive thing for the town. Um, don't wanna. No, you know, I actually, I will tell you alternatively. I think it's a good idea for the town, but I also was approached recently by a resident who was like, you know, I kinda wanna buy that and turn it into a house. And I was like, hmm, that's tax-based, right? So, so that's another thing to kind of think about is, is that something, do we wanna say?
Get it.
What is that's gonna be?
We can't sell it.
Can we get rid of the street behind it and turn it into a parking lot? That's shit that we're using.
Why can't the county sell it?
Once the county surpluses something to us, we, you, when we buy something for a dollar from the county, we can't, can't then turn around and sell it. There's probably a way to sell it, but the process right now, basically, Greenwell was contacted and said that we can, we can get it and we can probably get it faster, but we have to be committed to it and to this plan. So if we think we would prefer that they surplus it and try to get it back into the tax roll, then, then that's what we should say to them as well. But there's, we know there's interest in purchasing it for conversions housing, so.
So if you make money off it, the county's gonna want their cut.
Right, so that's why we, we can't turn around and sell it.
I think that we should just get it for the dollar and just fix it up.
I think we should get it for the town and turn it to the town.
It's a lot of, um, you've been talking about the trails and all this stuff for a long time.
Right, there's a lot, yeah.
And so then you finally have a home for.
We don't have time to do a survey.
But you'll have, you'll have a home now for the things that you've been talking about.
You're gonna have a home for me.
A, a home for the stuff you've been talking about trails since I've known you.
Yeah.
So that will definitely give you that.
And with the sidewalks that we're extremely grateful they gave us, that's like another way people can access. So it sounds like, it sounds like we have three people in favor of getting it. How are you guys feeling about it?
Yeah, I mean, I couldn't.
Yeah, I mean, you, like, I do have concerns, right?
Of course, we all do, but I mean, like, we get it for a dollar, eh?
No, I, I get that.
If, if we got all these stuff, we can get grants to get it fixed, so.
I get that. It matches my house, um, it's made of the same stone as my house, so I'd say we get it.
I, I get that. I, I do think, and I've heard that there are a lot of. They need to build a building and want the building in town. I like the idea of it being kind of a front door to the town, so I'm swayed by that argument though, I do.
More tax-based. Um, all right, well, we have one resident here, um, but what we're gonna do is, if we're done talking about the administrative items, we'll move on to the public comment. I'm gonna take y'all's feedback and let Greenwell pull the trigger on that.
Do you have a resident behind that?
So.
Wait on that too.
Oh, okay, so I'm gonna move it to the general public comment so that we follow the proper procedures. Um, so we're gonna let the person in the room speak first 'cause they're having to stand up all the way.
George, by all means, by, um, regarding the stone building, don't forget to make sure everything's legit as your building insurance. Make sure that it's on the rolls before it's taken out or anything. Um, also, if you do, you wouldn't be able to get the property tax for it, but if you spun off a community development corporation and then had them rent it out, you know, fix it up and rent it out, you might at least be able to get, um, income, uh, income tax for whoever who's entered it that way. Um, but, uh, there's also a suggestion at one time that, uh, although there's more storage, could be something else that they could use, um, also the, uh, non-profit tax and office space. Also a suggestion for the old school if we ever interested in that. Um, and the other thing is that, uh, we have started the board game night. Um, we've been doing it every other Wednesday. Um, the next one will be next Wednesday from six to nine PM. So if anyone wants to play board games, come on down. We've, uh, haven't advertised it well so far just to try and get everyone trained up on a few cooperative games and some, like, games that you can easily drop in and drop out of. Hopefully, we'll get some advertising posted next door and see if we can get to.
The town put it on Facebook.
Okay.
And Instagram, and people are excited about it and constant contact. It's here. Okay, we're gonna take our online comment.
Aye.
Yeah, hi, um, the, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes.
We can't hear you anymore, Patty.
All right, how about now?
Hear you, go, you're good.
Okay, um, there was at one time when, the last time that the county was gonna sell us the stone building um, for a dollar, the, uh, Historical Society, PG County Historical Society, was, uh, considering collaborating with us to actually run a visitor center and that they would supply folks, so that may be another option if you want to have someone in there to work with the Historical, PG County Historical Society. Cause I know they were very interested.
Okay.
John Petro was the one who originally was looking to do that.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right. All right, um, so we're gonna move on to preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda. Um, it will say that I have been sick for ten days, so it is possible that I have missed a few, like, I know there's like a bunch of little office administrative stuff, so there may be some minor stuff added to that. Do you want to?
Yeah. Old business would be A, or another 2023-10 property standard discretion. B, annexation. Uh, new business would be A, shared parking agreements. And B would be Marlboro Town Roads. For the, uh, 2023 boardwalk section.
Anything anyone knows that I missed off the top of their head or wants to add in?
With Marlboro Town Roads.
Um, we've been talking with them about having roads turned over, um, and we're getting, um, the, the draft agreement has begun being discussed with them.
Plowing the meetings.
We plow them already. It's a maintenance thing. It's kind of complicated, so I just wanna make sure, like, they've been supposed to get back to me, I've been talking with Kevin and whatnot. I just wanna give a kind of a deadline. If, if we can't get everything together for this deadline for this meeting, then we'll just generally discuss it. So we've got our farmer's market volunteer kickoff meeting. Um, this is a collaboration between the green team and the events committee. It is going to be a farmer's market happening prior to Trump retreat. But if you are interested in volunteering for the farmer's market, which is absolutely essential, we just cannot have a farmer's market without volunteers because of how much work goes into it. And we absolutely one hundred percent appreciate all those volunteers, especially Kathy, who is taking the lead on this. Um, and that meeting will be at six thirty on October fifth here at Town Hall. Um, so come on out and, and help make this happen this year. Um, we have our election coming up. We were here earlier to just discuss and meet with anyone who's interested in running. No one came in, but we hope you're thinking about running. And, um, I think I'd speak for all five of us when I say that we would be willing to talk to you about what it's like to be an elected official in the town of Upper Marlboro if you have any questions. Um, so if you want to run, you need to get your candidate form in by Monday, October ninth. And it's gonna go in the black box outside of Town Hall if you are not able to hand it directly into town staff. Um, the election is on Tuesday, November seventh, from eight AM to seven PM here at Town Hall. Make sure you made a plan to vote. If you would like to just be able to vote from home, you can request an absentee ballot. And, um, the town clerk is going to be sending out, uh, little postcards to every house so that you have this information.
When do we start campaigning?
So campaigning cannot start until.
After you get your, uh, your certificate, once you're certified.
Yeah, there's those three number weeks.
Yeah, like three weeks.
It's like three weeks prior to the day. So as a being.
You cannot put signs out. There's a, there's a requirement where you can go around, you can walk around and talk to people, but you're just gonna put signs out.
Um, there, there's some out in the hall. Okay, um, great. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the two people who came out in the rain. We appreciate it. Thank you to everyone who's online, um, and we will see you in two weeks. Oh, right, is there a motion to adjourn? Um, wait, hold on, uh, are you a second to them? Okay, Lot is, is making the motion, Colbert is seconding it. Good, I'm calling the roll for us.
President Franklin.
Aye.
To Mr. Colbert.
Aye.
To Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
To Mr. Lot.
Yes, aye.
Commissioner Pinoir.
Aye.
Motion carried, meeting is adjourned.